All the meeting in order. To the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the drive, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, great. Read his role hall, please.
President down.
Here.
Vice President Everard.
Here.
President Zimmerman.
President.
Trustee Wazour.
Here.
Trustee Lakey.
Yes.
Trustee Zurich.
Here.
And trusty Deller.
Here.
Here, good. Uh, well, goal number six, Bonnie, when I, could you read that for me?
Yes, uh, to foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us. Regardless of the basis for our interest in nature, we develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. The conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space.
Great, thank you. Lee, would you read the conservation stewardship, stewardship pledge?
We pledge to make a difference by standing up for water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong economy, and a beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number one, we will protect land which filters and removes pollutants from water while enhancing groundwater recharge.
Good, thank you, Mike. Nora, you're up. Land empowerment statement, please.
To many indigenous groups and tribal nations, including the Hochunk, Kikapu, Lakota, Dakota, Mascutan, Miami, Peoria, Patagonia, Sauk, and Muskwakis. McHenry County is part of their traditional homeland. We invite you to join us in offering respect to the indigenous peoples living here today and their ancestor stewardship of the land. Together, we celebrate these special places, seek to learn and honor the history of those who came before us, and strive to forge meaningful relationships with indigenous communities to deepen our collective connection to the land.
Great, thank you. You've anchored those three names pretty well. Yeah, I don't know if it would have stumbled through. Um, okay, seven point oh, right? There came a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening. Come in. Okay, second. The move is seconded.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee, uh, Zurich.
Yes.
Trustee, why Zurich? Why Zurich, sorry?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why Zurich and Zurich, yeah. Yeah, doesn't know one since.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Deller.
Yes.
Trustee Lakey.
Yes.
And President Down.
Yes. Hey, motion carries. Eight point zero, election of officers. And what then to do? Um, first, we'll start out with a nomination for president.
Yes, I would nominate Chris Dunn.
I'll say.
Have you moved in seconded? Um. Wait, did you say it three times? Any other nominations on the floor? And are there any other nominations? Was, there are not. Seeing none, I guess, uh, we go to the vote then?
Uh huh. Yes.
Yes.
And trustee Wazour.
Yes.
Trustee Deller.
Yes.
Trustee Zurich.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Lakey.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
And Vice President Down. Congratulations.
Yeah. Here's what's your president. Okay, uh, so we got a nomination for vice president.
I would like to nominate Lloyd Everard, vice president.
Okay, it's been moved.
I'll second him.
Seconded. Any other nominations on the floor, on the floor? And are there any other nominations in the floor? So I have to do it two or three times?
Three times.
Three times. Nominations on the floor, please. Seeing none, we'll vote.
Trustee Deller.
Yes.
Trustee Zurich.
Yes.
Trustee Lakey.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Wazour.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
I'm staying.
And, uh, President Down?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Here. Now we'll move on for nominations for treasurer. I'd like to nominate Sean Zimmerman.
Second.
And seconded, any other nominations on the floor? For nominations? Are there any other nominations seeing none? We'll go ahead and vote.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Lakey.
Yes.
Trustee Wazour.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
I accept.
And trustee, trustee Zurich.
Yes.
Trustee Deller.
Yeah.
And President Down.
Yes. Hey, we move on to nominations for secretary. Were there any nominations for secretary?
I'll nominate Ron.
Correct, I was, that's nominated for second.
Second.
Yeah. They're moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations on the floor? Thanks. Are there any other nominations seeing none? We'll be vote for secretary.
Trustee Zurich.
Yes.
Secretary Wazour.
I accept.
Trustee Lakey.
Yes.
Uh, Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
And President Down.
Yes. Hey. Eight point five nomination for trustee outreach and assignments. What does that entail?
Uh, well, as president, you have the opportunity to appoint liaisons to different groups. So we've had representatives over the years to attend the CAG, uh, harbor meetings.
Yeah, pretty much, I think we, I'd like to, maybe we can talk about those and volunteers rather than the appointee, something that they all want to do as a president. So we'll get a list about the list of committees and different meetings and groups that we need to have people go into. And see who wants to do what. Now, some people like the Green Drinks, some people like the Foundation, and others, so, well, try to choose at least one. So I think we'll table that for tonight and. I mean, that's, that's great. Okay. Nine point zero, uh, any recognition issues or permutations?
None this evening, we had the presentation during the COW.
Right. Yeah. Trustees report, anybody want to report on?
Yeah, I'll report on the foundation, I had their meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And if you recall, for, for, for me, it was, um, they've been debating for almost two years whether or not to change their status as a, uh, to be a non, non-for-profit versus a foundation, or two different, two different kinds, it's kind of splitting hairs. But the way they're going to go and become a charity, uh, gives them far more flexibility in terms of who they give money from, how they can, how they can spend the money. Uh, so it was recommended by the county two years ago, and they, they voted formally two meetings ago, and now all the paperwork has been submitted, and they expect the state to acknowledge within six to eight weeks to change in status. So that's actually a big deal, particularly as it relates to, um, referendum. Yeah, they're going to be able to help us, you know, far more, with far more flexibility than.
Oh, so I mean, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Great. Um, good, I think, one is they got a, a grant from the Aptar Group for $5,000 to go toward the Hollis boat launch, and that's the first big, uh, donation we've gotten from Aptar. So I think that was noteworthy, it's very, and the other small item is they're looking at a part-time position uh, to help Shauna, uh, particularly with the grant writing. And so they were actually started to interview candidates, said one person that they looked at, that I don't know if there's any decision yet or anything, but, um, that would certainly be helpful for Shauna to get more, more of the administrative things off of her desk.
Yeah. Good. Any other trustee reports, I, would you go to the trials or anything?
No, because that was the, I think it was the golf one, and then there's one tomorrow.
Right, so, right.
No, I, I do, I just have a comment, though, actually, it was, um, I keep it short, but it was, uh, my son, a friend of his, uh, their family lives, uh, on, uh, on the Fox River. Their property directly, uh, you know, butts up to Conservation Area Fox Fluff, right? And, um, they didn't know I was on the board, and we were just kind of hanging out, and he was, we're walking around the property, and he's got pretty much a butts, pretty long portion of it. And he's just started telling me about how great the Conservation District was, that they had a tree that was coming down, like, onto his property. And, um, he just started just telling me about, oh, they're so great to work with, and I told him about it, and they're going to come out right away, and, and all that. And then after he finished the story, I happened, you know, tell him that I was on the board, and he's like, oh, I just want to commend the staff. And it's just such a great story to, to have someone tell you that without them knowing that you have any relationship to the Conservation District at all. So I just wanted to kudos to the staff for just treating people fairly and listening, um, and taking action when residents request. And, um, I was very, very impressed. So it was, um, gentleman's name is Doug, Doug, he owned Douglas Automotive, I guess, for quite some time. So that, that's his property that butts pretty, pretty good portion of it up there. So just want to thank everybody for that.
Yeah, going on, Sean actually reminded me of it, um, with this, with his story. Um, I want to commend the education staff. Uh, my grandson last week, uh, went through the A camp or the summer camp, week-long, uh, project, uh, program, and just loved it, just, we just, I took him there every morning, got to see everybody, I picked him up, almost thirty, twenty, and then kids. And they did everything, fishing, canoeing, hiking, and just all kinds of neat stuff. And, uh, kudos to the, to the staff, they did a really good job.
Good.
Great program.
Good. Anything else? Being fairly new, and you don't really have anything at this point, so we'll move on. Uh, how many liaisons on, John is not here, he's up, uh, at the air, is it going on?
He's in Ashka.
Ashka, yeah. Oh, it was good. Uh, president's report, um, the only thing I can report is that communicating with the McHenry County Horse Club with Vern. Um, working on trying to get, uh, some more horse trails, uh, opened or things to accommodate Horse Club. And he'll be in public comments, be addressing us on that. Um, but also in the hot box, we, well, we'll have another question, uh, and we'll just defer that to staff, but he wants to at least, uh, present his, uh, situation tonight about the gas line. So we'll look at that. And, um, other, but. I had to read, all right. Well, I think that, well, that, uh, anything on that, uh, Martin Luther King? Oh, the Martin Luther King, yeah, basically, that's just, uh, will be put into a long-term plan to, uh, move that along, am I correct?
Correct, we've been in correspondence with this group that's interested in this contemplation garden. And so with that, again, based on similar types of resource availability, it's not something that was master planned in, but it's a concept, it's an opportunity. I think it's just a matter of resource sharing and, and again, being all these, again, different divergent thoughts and ideas, how do we best prioritize that? So, but we've been studying as part of our strategic plan this year to authenticate, that's been the first part of the authentication.
Yeah, I, I looked at the proposal, and it looked pretty, pretty, but one question, Bonnie, is the, you said it was a house, that do, do we have something that rented? Or what, what building from the property, that's?
Well, they've all been removed, except the footprint of where that overlooked shelter is. And of course, what we have is the, um, help the, I don't know, could be up at the area, we saw, right, we saw, what do they call that? That's the, was in Bailey, where.
Yeah, the building was, was moved from a nearby subdivision in nineteen sixty-two, I believe, and it was used as a shop and a residence while the camp was open. And Bailey Reewald, who does our cultural resource, um, has been able to narrow those dates down from talking at Camp Statt, who were there in the sixties, somewhere around nineteen sixty-six. But the building is fine.
Yeah, I kept, but it was, I was always wondering, was it a hotel or?
No, it was a, was a outbuilding with a place to sleep on the top.
Wow, okay, thanks.
It was much, yeah. So, okay. Uh, other things we've been working on, the Snowville Club requests, and so we're continuing to work on that. And, uh, that's it, so we'll go to public comments, number one. If you'd like this.
I'm not seeing any raised hands in the audience.
Thank you, we have two here, so, would you all just stand up? State, state your.
Brian, you go.
Yeah, state your name, and then you can sort of explain what you.
Oh, uh, my name is Brian Miller, I live on, uh, one three seven zero six Pleasant Valley Road, which is located not too far west of the Conservation Building there on the Pleasant Valley site. Um, I was given Chris's name by a friend of a friend to contact because I had, having some trouble with Nycor. And I don't want to waste anybody's time with this, but I was told, well, we need to get gas main down the Pleasant Valley Road, what would be to proceed road right away, but it's not right away. It is, our property lines go to the center line of the road, which would be the Pleasant Valley Conservation on the south side, and then several homes, one of mine, one of them being mine, on the north side of the road. There is a couple of issues with easement, and I've been dealing with Nycor since, like, I think it was twenty-one, I didn't have time to dig back in the emails, email you that today, I was in a hurry to get here, but, um, Nycor is telling me that they can't run the gas line on the south side of the road because Conservation won't grant them the easement or rights to do so. What I can, I came here today to ask was, is that true, or there be any record of that? Because, uh, myself and some of the other residents are really pushing to get natural gas. It is located to the east of me, down by Ask Landscaping, which is closer to Conservation Driveway. And then on the west side, it is down on the S curve, um, right at the S curve. Uh, but there's two properties, we're having trouble with easements, everything else is signed. How would I skate to get that?
Well, here's what we'll do, is, is, uh, I'll refer this back to staff. And, uh, so our staff people will look into this. And we'll come up, and then I will contact you, either staff or, or Elizabeth, the executive director.
It's just, it's a lot simpler, less easements on the south side of the road than getting on the north side and.
Sure, and we'd say within the telephone poles, is what you're saying.
Absolutely, yeah, and we're talking like a two-inch, a two-inch plastic gas main. I'm in the utility business for a living, so I'm kind of in spearheading this for all the neighbors. Um, I basically project manage this thing for Nycor, and we're really stumbling with an easement. And I was also told that we would have to go through a wetland due to what MCCD's request was not. It's, the whole thing seems awfully fishy, so I just want to follow up, and he, he offered me to just come here tonight and say it in front of everybody, so that's why I'm here.
If you have any correspondence, and definitely, so we get the details, and we'll be able to look it up on the map, and we'll have staff follow up with you and get more specifics. But anything with Nycor, that would be helpful, or would be.
Yeah, is there like, uh, an email address of yours or a county?
Yeah, I'll give you my card.
That'd be great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, well, the emails are so old, I'm having a hard time getting them to load. That's why I was trying to send you some information.
Sure.
Matter, it's been a real battle. It just seems really fun to me.
Well, yeah. I can't comment, but I guess with, uh, I don't see why our sound would full well be something simple.
Right, and the comment's already over there on the south side, so, yeah.
Thank you. Great. And you don't have to say for all the, if you don't want to.
I'm going to say, I actually, I, uh, as a side note, I live across from the Conservation, it's wonderful, and I'd like to know more about what the programs are, so I'm going to say.
Great, thank you.
Well, yes, Vern, would you like to?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm sorry I wasn't able to make your meeting last Thursday, I would have been here for that, but I couldn't. Uh, my name is Vern Scott, I'm currently the president of McHenry County Horse Club, and why I was there, I also want to thank you all for being on the Conservation District Board, I served here for five years. And so I appreciate, and went through the election of officers for five years, so very familiar with the process. So congratulations to all of you, new and old, who have, who have been on it. Uh, I put together, um, I was here, uh, at the, um, last meeting and talked about the Brookdale Trail and enhancing it for, I know there's three new board members, so I'm just going to briefly say that the Brookdale Trail system was funded through the horse community raising forty thousand dollars, working, um, jointly with the McHenry County Conservation Foundation. Uh, we wrote grants under behalf, and we secured forty thousand dollars, twenty thousand in grants, and twenty thousand we got in donations from the horse, horse community. That led us to apply, the district to apply for a two hundred, or, yes, two, a hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant, uh, would be RTP Regional Trail Program. And so the two hundred thousand that was raised and those two ventures brought about Brookdale. So that's a little bit about Brookdale for those who are new to that. Uh, thank you. First of all, I want to thank you, I got a letter back from John Kramer dated July eighth after we met last time. And he said, um, if, one, I wanted to thank him for implementing the note before you go tab on the district website, so it's a nice tab you can go to and see what trails are open and where it's closed, because a lot of times people didn't know, is it closed because it's wet, or is it open? And they get there and find out it's closed and have to work accordingly, so that's a great thing. We also talked about, uh, making sure people in the horse community, or any, any people in the, in the district, if the trail was closed because it was too wet, uh, conditions to do rock horse riding, refer them to Brookdale, because Brookdale will be usually open, and we don't get a lot of people using that, and we talked about different things and why we, how we can improve that. Um, in John's, uh, letter, and he gave me a call, he said the district intends to embark on developing a ten-year comprehensive plan in twenty twenty-five. Since the district, since the district is currently in the twenty twenty-four budget cycle, April of twenty-four to March of twenty-five, the board would have to approve this study within the next eight months to incorporate the funding of the twenty twenty-five budget cycle, which, um, would be April of twenty-five through April of twenty-six. So if you're going to do the study, you're going to have to fund it shortly, two months from now, no later. The study is being proposed to take more than one year, that would take it into twenty twenty-six budget cycle, which would be April, um, uh, twenty-seven to March of twenty-eight. And then the earliest shovel-ready projects would be proposed to the board for approval would be during the twenty twenty-eight budget cycle, which is April twenty-eighth to March of twenty-thirty. Once again, I'm requesting expanding the back section of the Brookdale Trail to include the point five-three mile off Paulson Road, which is currently a fire lane, the McHenry County Horse Community would volunteer to help clean up the fire lane and incorporate into the existing Brookdale Trail system. Um, that's, that's my, my pitch. Uh, I just want to add one thing. In October of this year, I may be eighty years old. And if the trail isn't ready till March of twenty-thirty, or somewhere after that, I'll be done, and I know my horse will be dead. So I'm asking, if there's anything the board could do to just take an existing tr, fire lane and convert it into a horse trail, it would do, and for those who are last, it'd give us diversity, it would enhance the experience, it would drive more people to utilize Brookdale in a just into Rush Creek. So I ask if the board would consider that, I appreciate you listening to me, and again, thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Vern. Um, only comment I have on that is we are working on, uh, some other alternatives, and, uh, we'll be back to, uh, that, which would hopefully, uh, possibly open some trails up for spring.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that, and the horse commission appreciate it, thank you very much, and good luck. I saw the resolution on the, uh, tax increase, um, that you're proposing in November. Very happy, I totally support that process and that way of doing it, putting the money from the taxpayers, right, into the use for the taxpayers and not to bond houses or, or any of that, so thank you very much, good job.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, uh, consent agenda.
Secretary. The big down.
Yeah, no, what do I need to do? Okay, so, we're going to need to. And one motion, we're two, though, so you need this.
All of them.
Okay, so. Well, do we want to make the motion first and then, uh, have the option to remove anything from the agenda before he reads this off?
So you should read, well, you could ask anybody if anybody had anything from the consent agenda.
Right, that's what I was going to say, so trustees may remove any items from the consent agenda for discussion purposes prior to the motion to approve. So is there anything, uh, on the consent agenda, anybody have any questions, I, or if they move forward? Okay, uh, we have to follow the motion first.
Well, just, uh, uh, in my point of order, yes, so at the COW, there was a discussion on the fuel bid, and so if you could just maybe address the conversation or the questions relative to that, it is on the consent agenda, I believe we had answered the questions that you had, but.
Right, uh, that was fourteen point one three.
That was fourteen, fourteen thirteen, fourteen thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah. So, yeah, I questioned, and I wanted to pull that from the consent agenda at first, but we worked it out with staff, and he was basically just clarifying, uh, to me about how the fuel bid process was working, and I was working through a vendor, and, uh, we had most, you know, all the questions were answered, so I don't, I don't.
I did see in the packet that how they go to, to bid, so.
Right.
Are you required, personally, don't notice, to have more than one bid, or is it just whoever bids on it?
Well, legally, um, when we get quotes, when anything is over thirty thousand dollars, we are required to let it, to put it out to bid. Um, sometimes we hopefully will get multiple bids, sometimes we may just get one. At that point, um, it comes in front of the board, and the board could decide to reject and, and rebid or accept what has been.
Right, so we're going to go ahead and, you know, we're going to approve to let that out to bid, but if only one comes back and we're happy with it, then no, there's a possibility changes, so. Thank you, I'll ask you here. Um, the insurance, I think we talked about that, sure. And, uh.
And that is not on here, we, we had a consensus, but we will bring that, if we need a formal action, we'll bring that back next month on the consent agenda.
So, all right. So, we need a, the, the motion before Ryan goes through.
By him reading, he will put the motion on the floor as the secretary.
Okay, fourteen point oh, board business consent agenda. Fourteen point one, approval of minutes at previous meetings. Fourteen point one A, May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, regular meeting, executive session. Fourteen point one B, June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, committee of the whole. Fourteen point one C, June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, regular meeting. Fourteen point two A, acceptance of treasurer's report from June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four is presented. Fourteen point three, acceptance of investment report, uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty-five quarter one. Fourteen point four, resolution number twenty-four dash forty-eight, a resolution authorizing the destruction of listed verbatim recordings of executive sessions prior to January two thousand twenty-three in compliance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Fourteen point five, resolution number twenty-four dash forty-nine, authorizing the release of a list of executive session meeting minutes to the public domain in compliance with the Illinois Openings Meeting Act. Fourteen point six, resolution number twenty-four dash fifty, designating the consistorium financial institutions or district funds from August first, two thousand twenty-four through July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Fourteen point seven, resolution number twenty-four dash fifty-one, accepting the two thousand twenty-three natural heritage stewardship report as presented. Uh, stewardship report as presented. Fourteen point eight, resolution number twenty-four fifty-two, authorizing the disposal of eight surplus vehicles through an online auction conducted by. Ernoff Auction Services at no cost to the district. Fourteen point nine, resolution twenty-four dash fifty-three. Authorizing the placement of seven structures, including Rush Creek Residence, Hollows Residence. Goose Lake Pole Building, Maringo Ridge Pole Building, Two Glacier Park Outbuildings and the Fox Bluff. Tribute Building and the Demo List. Fourteen point one O, resolution number twenty-four fifty-four, warning professional services. Agreement to Hayne Associates provide engineering services for development of plans for a wetland extreme migration project, the Tishwaki Corridor Conservation Area. For a cost not to exceed fifty-nine thousand, six hundred, ten dollars. Fourteen point eleven, resolution number twenty-four dash fifty-five. Warning a contract to Shoder Asphalt Services Incorporated for the renovations, resurfacing. Of the asphalt trail section between Lorraine and Hillside Road for a cost not to exceed the base bid. Of four hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars and fifteen cents. Fourteen point twelve, resolution twenty-four fifty-six, warning a contract. To Chicago Lane paving contracts for the renovations and resurfacing of the asphalt trails. Section between Hillside Road and Eaglewood Road for a total cost not to exceed the base bid of three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Fourteen point one three, authorization to prepare bids spec- specifications and let bids for the purchase and delivery of unleaded diesel and propane fuels.
Okay, it's it?
Uh huh.
Yeah, well, I make one correction, Edgewood, really, just.
Edgewood.
That, that angle, and.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so.
Be the second.
Yeah, that was the form of the motion for the consent, so I need a second.
Second.
Mike. The rule in second.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Lahey.
Yes.
Trustee Zeller.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Secretary Wenzor.
Yes.
Trustee Durick.
Yes.
President Down.
Yes, you got a lot of black topic going on. So, good, okay, motion carries. Alrighty, so other board business, fifteen one, approval of bills payable for the month, treasurer. You wanna take over in there?
Yeah, fifteen point one A, uh, I requested uh, three bills uh, on June. Uh, to put further details, uh, on uh, June seventh, twenty twenty-four, from vendor Ralph Helm, a cordless lower. Amount of two thirty-three ninety-nine. Item two was on June twelfth, to vendor Kelly Williamson Company. Bulk motor oil and for eight fifty-seven oh four. And the third one was uh, on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, to vendor uh, Heeb Buddies. Um. And for a hay rake for seven thousand eight hundred dollars. So, uh, that was requested, those uh, details and supporting documents will come in. Um, you can call the next Monday.
Hey, where you? Blue Bill, hey?
What was the name of the vendor?
Heeb Buddies.
Heeb Buddy. Also, buddy, it's an implement dealer, and uh, it's a hay rake. That's a piece of wood. You know, this is where I.
Yeah, I believe it's for cleaning fire breaks.
Oh, gotcha.
And was just talking to you.
I'm just curious on what we use it for, so, alright.
I just requested, um, yeah, the documents on it, and um. And uh, requests for reasonableness of the purchase and um. And was that the lowest responsible amount to pay for that?
Fifteen one, repeat.
Yeah, fifteen one B, uh, I make a motion to approve those payable as indicated on the submission of those pending for the month ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, is the motion, we heard, we need a second.
Second.
They loaded second, so.
Treasurer.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Lahey.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Zeller.
Yes.
Trustee Durick.
Yes.
President Down.
Yes, motion carries. Uh, executive directors report, if you have a thought for us.
Sir, just a, a few updates, um, as you probably noticed on Sunday's paper, front page of the Northwest Herald. Um, there was the article that appeared on the, the ballot initiative that's moving forward for the general election. Did help clarify after the prior week where um, communication on the subhead was an increase, it's specifically in the article followed up that this actually. Was a reinvestment and a reduction due to the savings that the district has advanced to paying off our debt service, so it did clarify that. It also spoke, shared on a three hundred thousand dollar home, what the impact would be, and then also, um, the consequences should, uh, a question be unsuccessful. What impact it would have to our water quality, our wildlife habitat and recreational access for all the amenities that. That we need to, to take care of, and so I thought it did, did communicate that, um, so, so that's out there and uh, the ballot initiative committee, I know, continues to, to do their work separate. Um, but at some point, then through, they'll be connecting uh, with board members and others about that work. Uh, we also, Representative Reich has been following up with the Illinois Department of Transportation, and we had followed up back in November. Of two thousand twenty-three, sent a letter to the Director of Transportation in February of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, we resent information, they did not receive the communication back in February. Um, so we resent that out and hopefully we'll get some correspondence, and this is about vacating. Uh, the right-of-way um, access transfer within Glacier Park Conservation Area and having that. Turned over to the district as protected uh, public space, so, um, that continued conversation and um. You know, landscapes, uh, I think we shared that uh, has been sent to the printer, blue line has been reviewed, and so that should be, it's up on, online, but that will be out and available, and also we'll have information. About the proposition, the ballot initiative, uh, in the article. That's all I have.
Um, any correspondence or any more action on the home trail, as far as that whole rail, Rockford to Chicago rail?
Oh, for the meetings on that, well, I know staff had met with them.
I think we have another meeting set up in early autumn.
Okay, I'm just curious where you're at.
At the time we met last time, they had no written plans, I get choked.
Great. Our stance is still up in the air on that?
Yeah, without having actual plans to be able to comment on where, probably biggest issue is the siding, which is supposed to be ten thousand feet long. Uh, but they did not have any of that information available in the plan.
Seemed like it was a big rush for it now, so, yeah.
Well, the, the good thing is there seems to be a good.
Yeah.
Well, communication back and forth, um, you know, so.
There is.
There, yeah, they're not reluctant to meet and they're actually coordinating most of the meeting, so, good.
So it's very, it's positive, good.
Um, the other thing too, just which is big news, and we announced that uh, the two director positions. Director of Marketing and Education and Director of Land Preservation and Natural Resources, the career notification uh, will be going out on Friday. And uh, we will begin that process, the goal and hope is to have someone in each of those positions no later than November first.
So, if you get a chance after the meeting, I want to communicate with Brian, uh, over the. Uh, this situation, you would want me thinking. Okay, any other questions or comments on the director's reports? Public comments number two, anybody out there?
I'm not seeing any raised hands in the online audience.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Anything else needs to be brought up tonight before the board?
The only thing I will say, two in the director's report, uh, for those that quarterly reports. So that you had access to, um, you see our strategic plan, the actions that are being made forward with those. The general, larger, bigger uh, vision that the board has, and then it's the work plan that we're working towards over a five-year period. So you can see the areas that are looming, most everything is in progress, there have been. A, a variety of things that have been completed, but not to be worried, things are moving forward. Um, uh, again, the first major initiative issue was the ballot initiative without hands on deck. Uh, second, um, the, you'll see the project list that shows projects that are over twenty-five thousand dollars or more. Um, that's in our capital project, and staff gives you an update.
Where's this at, again?
Uh, this is part of, they're in the supplemental material, it's on here.
The red, green, yellow.
Red, green to show, and so each of the projects, it shows the status of where they're at and just an update and um.
Sessions.
It's in session land, they're all attached there, so you have the master project capital list, you also then have our dashboard, which is the metrics of general, um. Uh, participation and program numbers, number of visitors to sites, so that is something that we keep track of metrics, so we can go back and take a look at that, so and then the, in the news, any press releases of coverage. And then a foundation report, so all of that is provided to quarterly, and then once a year, at the end of the year, you'll see our American with Disabilities Act. Uh, report of status of, of how we move towards that plan. But any questions that you have on that, you're welcome to call me, and I'm happy to, to go over that.
Thank you. Anybody else have any? And you know, that's all, that session's where you go into and then to the right.
You can click down the attachment.
Yeah. And you can catch up with that. That's all right, it's, it's a lot to think in, you know, they're a little show. Good. Okay, entertain the motion to adjourn. Second. I'll be the first.
Yes, you're first.
You're first.
I'll first.
You're it.
I'll Thursday.
Okay, wait, okay.
Okay, Ron first, John second.
Okay. Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Secretary Wenzor.
Yes.
Trustee Zeller.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Durick.
Yes.
And Trustee Lahey.
Yeah.
President Down.
Yes.
Great.
Five forty.